Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's a little bit of an unusual night in that the Narragansett School Committee election has not been certified yet due to a backlog at the Board of Elections. So we have been advised that the current school committee members are current school committee members until the election is officially certified. So we're happy to have Josh here for one more meeting. So thank you for coming. We appreciate that. I'm going to miss sitting next to you. And congratulations to the four, the other three incumbents. Really excited to continue working with you. And congratulations to Jennifer.
And Josh thought he was retired.
Yeah. So it's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, so we're moving on to oral reports. Do any school committee members have a report to give? No? Okay, Diane.
On October 28th, I attended the Rhode Island Association of School Committees Zoom Seminar on School Safety. And it was interesting to learn that the Rhode Island School Safety Committee has certain legislative items that they would like to see enacted in this upcoming session. One is to have less fire drills and more lockdown drills. And the logic behind that was that the last time a school child was lost in a fire was 1953. So they're thinking of maybe rebalancing the drills. Second item that they would like to see enacted was state funding for school resource officers. And the third is state funding for ALIS training. And so that's their agenda, and we'll see how much of it comes to be.
Interestingly, I know Steve has done a lot of work with that. You're going to see ALIS training on our December agenda. That's something that we do, and we're renewing our contract with them as we go forward. And if you recall, in the past, we have received support from the state for school resource officers, and that support aged out, so we'd love to see that again.
Great. Thank you for the update, Diane. So no other members have a update? Okay. All right, so we're moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Thank you. I will speak just very briefly first of all. Congratulations to all our returning and new school committee members. I just have a couple of highlights, and then I'm going to pass it off to Gail to go over our assessments. So first of all, I just want to do a quick congratulations to Cole Francis and Madeline O'Neal, Matty O'Neal, who are First Team All-State in cross country. I got to see them run a little bit over a week ago. Very impressive. It's the first time that I can remember that we had two First Team All-State runners in cross country, so they did an absolutely outstanding job. We had a great fall sports season, and so I know you saw that in Diane's report, but we're really proud of all of our students, and winter sports will pick up right after Thanksgiving. So last evening, on a statewide basis, the secondary regulations, the new secondary regulations passed the State Board of Education. And so while we will do a report for that on you in an upcoming time, is some significant changes for students. They will be in effect for the current, they extended it for the current seventh graders. It was originally supposed to be for the current eighth graders, but there was some pushback from the field about the implementation timeline. So the highlights of that, and again, we will go into this more deeply, is that it will require students to take more advanced mathematics, so they will have to pass Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry, all students. All students will be required to take two years of the same world language, and there's a credit distribution there that we can go into detail about. It includes civics, computer science, and personal finance also are requirements that are added to that. So what does that mean for us? It means that we're going to need to relook at our graduation policies, right, and revise those so that they reflect what is the new state regulations. The second thing that it does, and we've known that these are coming, and I've hinted at this to you all at previous meetings, is that we have to take a really hard look at how we use time. And so we have had an ongoing committee, really since last spring, with various stakeholders, students, parents, a lot of faculty administrators, really looking at our middle school and high school schedules. And so we had actually an all-day meeting today where we came to consensus on a basic framework for that. We still have to work through some of the, you know, the devil's always in the details, right? But we have a consensus on the basic framework that will align our schedule for the middle school and the high school, and, you know, specifically grades seven through 12 with some flexibility, and grades five and six. And so that's really good news, because for us to come to consensus on that now while we're bringing it back to the full committee for more vetting, you know, I do anticipate that we will work that out before we get into the heavy-duty scheduling. And so that, we will give a presentation to the school committee on that, probably in December or January, and that will be in effect for the coming September. So that will affect our course of studies and some other pieces as we go forward. So again, that's all we've been forward-thinking about that, because we knew the secondary regs were coming. And so we are a little bit ahead of the game in terms of being able to work through the kinks for a year before the kids for whom it matters the most arrive in high school. So then the other thing I want to highlight, and I'll pass the baton to Gail with this, is that we have a lot to celebrate around our test scores. We have exceeded our pre-pandemic levels, so that's really exciting. So our RICAS scores are up in mathematics about 14 points, I believe, which is a very large gain. And as you know, I have been talking endlessly about mathematics, and, you know, one of the things that we are very concerned about is supporting our students and our teachers in mathematics instruction and making sure that we're getting, making progress in that. And while there is, without a doubt, a whole lot of room to still grow, we are encouraged by the progress, and so that's a really nice thing. We were actually highlighted by the Department of Education. The commissioner asked me to speak at a national forum. That was a Zoom national forum put on by the Council of Chief State School Officers last week, where we highlighted some of the accomplishments in Narragansett, so that was really nice. And so credit to our teachers and to our principals and to our parents and students who have worked really hard to continue to grow. Gail will go into the SATs as well. You know, the SATs, we were, we helped study in ELA and were within the range of variance, you know, that we expect to see for mathematics. Dropped a little bit, didn't drop significantly enough for us to have concerns beyond what we already had. And so we're going to continue to work on our mathematics instruction at the high school. And as you all know, we are implementing new curricula. Whenever you have new curricula, you will have a bit of an implementation dip before you have the growth, and so we're working through those pieces. Okay? But with that, I'll pass the baton to Gail, who can get into the details.
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
On the secondary changes to regulations, how close or how much support was there on the board, if you know, for including civics as a one credit?
I think it was unanimous. So I think they all wanted it.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't hear it referenced, though. Was it already?
Oh, yes, civics is in there. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry if I didn't say that.
Maybe I just missed it.
No, I probably forgot. I'm sorry.
You said that.
Yes, so civics is in there. Yes.
Oh, can you hear me now? Oh, there we go. I know that you already have this presentation in your packet, and I know that these scores have already been public, so I won't read every slide to you, but I wanted to at least highlight some areas of strengths and some areas that we are working on and tell you a little bit about our plans, if that's okay. So the assessments that are in this presentation packet are science, SAT, the RICAS, and we also put in the AP scores for you to look at. Science, so starting next year, our science scores are going to be part of our accountability ratings. So it's not just going to be ELA and math, it's going to include science. So as we do every year, we take a deep dive into, well, how do we do on our science tests? And we go back to the departments, and we show them where we did well and where we could improve upon, and we come up with a plan such as, let's look at our pacing, let's look at our materials, and so on. But this year, we decided to add a couple of other pieces to that plan because we feel that we could do better in science than we did, and we need to do better because it's going to be part of our accountability rating. So I went to all the science meetings in the middle school and the high school. We looked over the scores, and we started to implement interim science assessments, which are being paid for, they're optional, but they're being paid for by the state this year. So we were able to get that grant to be part of it, because there is a cost associated with it, but we don't have to pay for this year. And what these interim assessments do and we need to do better because it's going to be part of our accountability rating. So I went to all the science meetings in the middle school and the high school. We looked over the scores, and we started to implement interim science assessments, which are being paid for, they're optional, but they're being paid for by the state this year. So we were able to get that grant to be part of it, because there is a cost associated with it, but we don't have to pay for this year. And what these interim assessments do is, after they finish a concept, there's a bank of test questions that mimic what are on the actual science tests that the teachers can give and get real-time data on, and then draw their lesson plans based on that data. So it's not like we're using a lot of time to stop instruction and have hours of testing. It's just two or three little questions that go along with the concepts that give the teachers the information they need to drive their instruction and give students practice on how those test items look. Also, in our middle school, you know, we have our partnership with GemsNet. So this year, GemsNet is actually doing coaching with the middle school teachers to ensure that our pacing is where it needs to be and to help them with the interim assessments. So I just wanted you to know about that plan, because it is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. As far as our science results compared to the state, we had, this is overall, our entire district, 45% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations. And for the state, it was 30.9%. So we are above the state, but, you know, we do strive to do better than 45%. So we have a plan and hoping to see the results of that plan next year when I'm back here at this podium.
Gail, for the interim assessments, is that at five, eight, and 11, or what grades?
No, the interim assessments, we're able to give it in five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. So in the high school, we're only, we're going to give it in the biology classes and the chemistry classes, but the five, six, and seven, eight teachers are going to use them in all their classes. Yep.
Gail, is the GemsNet curriculum, is that aligned with the next-generation science standards?
It is. And right now, the GemsNet partnership that we have, we use the FOSS science kits. As you know, we have to pick from high-quality curriculum materials per ride. As of right now, there are not enough science, high-quality-rated materials for us to engage in that process. I spoke to Ride a couple of weeks ago, and because we're supposed to meet that deadline by 2025, I said, I don't know how we're going to do that, there's not enough to choose from. And Ride said, we don't either. So they might be changing that date to push it out a little bit, because right now, there aren't enough to look at. But yes, they are all aligned to the standards.
And then I noticed that the four content areas that they test was physical science, life science, earth science, and space science. Is there any one of those content areas that we may need to bolster up more? Or is it just kind of across the board that needs strengthening?
We did fairly well in the life science, and it was mostly the physical science that we could do a little bit better in. And we had these discussions, we had conversations such as, oh, we don't teach that until after they take the test. Or in fifth grade, for example, that score really is based on what the children did in K-5. And sometimes there was a concept that they had in third grade, and then they didn't have it again, and they took the test. So that is why our GemsNet people are also working with the elementary school to really focus on, you know, this is a concept they're not going to see again until the test. So you really have to get through this unit, because the kids aren't going to see it again. So, yeah. So that's the science story. SATs, I know you already have seen these scores, but for mathematics, this is an area that we hope we will improve upon, and we do have some things in place to bring these scores up. One thing that we have implemented this year is iXL at the high school. So as you know, we use iReady at the elementary and middle school. And this is an assessment that we give three times a year to get a dipstick of where the students are doing. And then the students are given a pathway that they are put on based on their needs or if they need enrichment. So we were using iReady at the high school last year, but we found that we need to look at something different, because it only went to grade eight, and kids were testing out of it. So that is where iXL is coming in this year. All the students at the high school have been screened already in the fall. The teachers have that data, they know who's below the benchmarks and so on. And then the ELA and the math teachers have scheduled time for the kids to hop onto iXL. And each teacher might do it differently. They might do it when the kids enter class, when they leave class, homework. But they are supposed to get on that weekly. And that should also help to prepare them for the SATs. Our scores for the English, not bad, actually. We had, I think, 70% last year, and we're about 69. If you wonder why there are two separate numbers here, it's because the 111 are the students who are technically, physically in our building at Narragansett High School, and the 113 are all of our students. Some of those kiddos could be in out-of-district placements, and they also took the test. So that's why there's that little discrepancy between the 70.3 and the 69. I know you like to see this comparison, so I just put this little table together for you just to see how we fared as, compared to our neighboring districts in science and ELA, math, and then the SATs. So you can see for science, you know, we're pretty much in the pack, but a little bit on the low end of that pack, which is why we're having such a focus on what our plan is going to be this year. The math, we're pretty much in the pack for the math, the ELA. And then our SAT scores for ELA, pretty decent, but math, we can definitely improve upon with some of our neighbors. And then we have our AP scores, which is very exciting. So we, this year, are adding AP Art and AP Human Geography, and we hope to be adding an AP Music course next year. I like this little table on the side here, because it shows you how the number of students taking AP courses at our high school has increased from 2018 to 2022. We're up to 122 students, so that's great. But the third line of that table, I'd really like you to focus on, our scores. Getting a three is what is considered a good passing AP score. And our scores have gone up from 2018 to 2022, with 85 students getting a three or more on their AP exams. So that is definitely something to celebrate as well. Any questions? I know that was fast and furious.
So one thing I do want to highlight from what Gail had to say is, and I'll work backwards. So remember, an important piece of our AP scores is that we continue to increase the number of students who are accessing and taking their AP exams, and we are not seeing a decrease in scores. Okay? And so that is really important. I think we've always been believers in our district that, you know, effort makes achievement, right? And so kids are making the effort to enroll in these classes. And the very fact that they are in the class to begin with bodes well for them. Research will prove once they get to college, right? So whether they pass the exam or not, just taking the class will help them. But the fact that they are taking it and passing the exam is great. And we will be, and you will see in our course of studies, we will be adding two or three more AP classes for next year. So, and we're excited about that. We're going to be adding AP Environmental, AP...
Music Theory, hopefully.
AP Music Theory, and I think one more, but I'm not positive which one it is.
Oh, AP Pre-Calculus.
Oh, yeah, AP Pre-Cal, which I can't really understand why that's an AP class, but it is.
It's new.
And so, it's new. But Gail, could you go to the math, year by year? Do you have that in your deck?
For the RICAS?
For the RICAS. So I just want to point out to you, for the math, year by year, and you have that in your packet. You know, I want to highlight that last year, what we saw in our grades seven and eight was achievement in the 30s in mathematics, and this year, they're in the 50s, right? So again, we still have a lot of room to grow there. But that's a significant improvement for them. And so I just want to acknowledge the work of the teachers and the students of those cohorts, because we really focused very deeply on mathematics instruction in the middle school and in those years, and you really saw the outcome of that. So I want to congratulate them on their good work.
I hope that slide's in your packet. We had two slide decks going, and I don't think the one with that is on your screen right now, but...
It is in your packet.
I hope it's in your packet. And, yeah, one that I really want to celebrate, the grade-three scores, which really is pre-K, K-1, 2, 3, in ELA and math, were very good.
So 75 and 77%, which is just knocking the park, right? And so, you know, where we have some variance from year to year, we're working with the teachers on those pieces. And, you know, the message really is, though, that we know from grade three, like, they can do it, right? And so really, it's about sustaining that, you know, over time.
And that was my question, because I noticed from grade three to grade four on both RICAS math and English is quite a dip. Have you been able to pinpoint a reason for that?
Yeah, so statewide, there was a trend that there's a dip from grade three to grade four. I'm not quite sure why. I did talk to the principal about this. And one thing that we think may have attributed to that is, last year, we allowed the, we were trying to get the kids ready for middle school to switch classes more. So they switched for, I think it was math, reading, and writing. And the thought was also, if the teachers had to prep less, you know, they could really become experts in that subject area. We've now pulled back on that, because maybe for that age level, they still needed to kind of be with their own teacher for the entire day. So we think that may have attributed to it. But like I said, as a state, the trend was they went down from third grade to fourth grade. I'm not sure. I think the fourth-grade test is a lot more rigorous than the third-grade test, just from looking at some of the released items. But that's all I can think of, why that trend is happening for us.
Gail, I just have two super quick questions. Any idea when the parent reports are going to get on site? Those haven't arrived yet, right?
Yes, they arrived last week.
Okay.
And we are, as we speak, stuffing envelopes right now. So our plan is for us to put them in the mail by Wednesday, and then, you know, it takes time. So by the end of next week, the parents will have the RICAS and the science.
Okay.
As far as the SATs, the parents can access them online.
And then, really quick, not a big, long explanation, but can you give a little soundbite about the PD, like, the work for this year with the teachers, like, looking at RICAS scores? Like, you talked about science.
Yep.
What you're doing, but just like a very high-level...
Yeah, no. So last week, the coaches and I met with the principals at the middle and the elementary school. We already did our little SAT scores at the high school earlier this year, because we had them. So at those meetings, a coach and an administrator will be there, and we will go over with the teachers, you know, here's the, you know, overall view of how you did and how you did compared to the state. But we're going to be pulling items for item analysis. We're going to pick a couple of items to celebrate, and then we're going to pick some items and say, hmm, let's think about these items. You know, why do we think our kids didn't do well on them? What could we do? Is it pacing? Is it how the questions worded? Do they need more practice? So those are starting, those discussions and meetings are starting to take place before Thanksgiving and the week after Thanksgiving.
And you do that at each grade level?
At each grade level, yep.
So, you know, just looking at the scores, and we were just talking about the difference between grade three, four, and five. So these are all different cohorts of students, and I, it's just a wonder, you know, if we think about grade five, because the numbers are also very different. If you look at the state as a whole from three, four, or five, grade five students, if we just rewind a little bit, they're the students that are missing those foundations from, and I know we don't want to talk too much longer...
Right.
Theoretically, about the impact of, but it's still a real thing.
Yeah.
And when we're looking at very specific grades and the foundation that was, that was missing or not quite as effective.
Yep.
Where we look at grade three right now, they now have had solid a couple of years in schools, so that foundation is secure.
Right.
And so I'm just wondering, you know, if that's still an impact here when we're looking at these as different cohorts, as opposed to a decreasing trend? If we look at them as pure cohorts, that grade-five cohort in Narragansett, as well as statewide, is that group, I think, that's been impacted most by that lack of foundation?
And we do have cohort data that I can share with you if you're interested, because we do kind of track the cohorts to see how they're doing throughout the years as well. But I think COVID definitely has had an effect, especially with the science at the elementary school. I mean, when they were on virtual learning, they probably didn't have as much science. So that, you can see that that has affected our scores as well.
And we also know the tutoring programs that have been going on now the last two years at all of the schools, particularly the elementary school. And I think this is a clear demonstration of the impact of that, so that's exciting to see.
Absolutely, yep.
So well done.
Absolutely. And we hope to continue the tutoring in some format this year. We still have some COVID money to dedicate to that.
Any more questions for Gail? Alex?
Just a quick comment, just echoing all of the wonderful comments that have already been made. Just, you know, my figurative hat is off to all of the students, teachers, tutors, and parents for really defying the odds here. And I really think it speaks volumes to the resources that we're providing, and the scores are showing improvement. And I'm really excited to see the growth that these students undertake over the next year. And, you know, on the RICAS mathematics scores, grade three, 77% meeting or exceeding expectations is no small number and no small accomplishment. That's huge. And, you know, just saying what Josh had already mentioned here, you know, building that momentum and keeping those standards going. And now that they've set the foundation, monitoring that growth over time will be crucial. So again, really job well done, and something that we should all be applauding and celebrating. Thank you.
Any other questions for Gail? All right, well, thank you very much. And Pete, anything else in your superintendent's report? Okay, thank you very much. So we are moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve consent agenda items CA 1A, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to the budget report. Karen?
Good evening. Expenses for the four months ended October 31st, 2022. Total $8,583,286. That's 24.76% of our budget. And our expenditures and encumbrances total $29,534,228, and that's 85.21% of our budget.
Any questions for Karen? All right, thank you. So we're on to our school committee business items, and I'm wondering if one of the, if the committee is comfortable if we moved, we swapped the order, and we moved item number five, the purchase of musical instruments, to the top, because we have some guests here. Someone want to make a, do we need a motion, Diane, to just change the order? Okay. Is everybody comfortable if we just start with item number five, and then we'll go back to the top and go sequential?
Yes.
All right. Well, I got a motion here. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the Director of Finance Administration to approve the purchase of musical instruments from Roberts Musical Instruments in the amount of $43,395.84?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So we are fortunate in that there has been an arts grant that has been awarded to every school. And who better to spend an arts grant than one of our arts teachers, right? Our musical arts teacher, Diane. And so Diane, over the years, every year in our budget, has been requesting support for our burgeoning music program. And one of the things that we need, and Diane can talk about in more detail, is, you know, certainly more specialized instruments. So with that, Diane, if you could just explain a little bit about what this funding is going to?
Absolutely. Over the summer, when Karen emailed me to let us know about the grant, we did a reach out to all the music staff in the district and also to our administration. And we engaged in lengthy conversations about different ways we could spend that money. It's program-changing money. No, no small... It's program-changing money. No, no small feat, no small asset to us. After a lengthy discussion, we decided that we should make an investment in what we term generational instruments. We define that by instruments that are not electronic in nature, are very expensive, and have a lifetime operation of approximately thirty to fifty years, with the thought of none of us will be around to have to figure out how to replace them as long as they're well-maintained. Our original plan in the budget had been to split up, especially if you're looking at the Adams and Ludwig timpani, to split those up over years and get like a drum at a time for the middle school and high school. And with this money coming in, we thought it was an opportunity to clear those needs and to redeploy our budget to some of the smaller ticket items that we've also identified would be nice to have. So it's kind of changing our plan for, for our budget over the long term by taking some of the big-ticket items off. So you'll see that the majority are the two sets of timpani, one for the PR school, one for the high school, some mallet percussion, which alongside, as a percussion instrument, they, they naturally last longer because they're not dealing with, they're not a wind instrument. They're not dealing with corrosion or any, I won't get into any details with that, but they will last as long as they're maintained. We're also investing in tubas, two tubas in one euphonium, which will add to our school inventory. We can kind of spread those out so that all of the instruments we currently have will last longer. As I mentioned through the process, we also identified some smaller ticket items that we'd like to pursue, and we'll come up with a plan with our music staff and the building administrators for how to best handle those going forward. And that was, that was the end of my report. Any, any questions?
So Pete, how much of this is from the grant and how much is from, you know, like the school-based budget? Like about, like is?
I'll ask Karen on that one.
The, the grant was for thirty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars, and then the balance will be from the budget, and that's forty-seven hundred dollars.
That's awesome. Excellent. Any other questions from any committee members? Alex?
Well, I just want to say that this is a wonderful opportunity, and I trust your recommendations completely, having been a former student of yours. And just a quick question, how quickly will these instruments be received if approved? And could we possibly see some of these being used at upcoming concerts this year?
It's funny you mention that. If approved, I think we are approved, I will text Robert's Music as soon as I leave, and we'll get those orders in this week. Supply chain with musical instruments, like everything else, is a little bit unpredictable right now. So I'm not exactly sure when they'll be in. But with the auditorium renovation project, I foresee a, a big celebration when we open up that auditorium, inviting back a lot of alums and our community members to celebrate. Because we'll look a lot different starting next school year than, than we have previously.
Excellent. And also really appreciate providing the three quotes and the research that went into this. So it does look like it was very well thought out, and this is the best recommendation from what I'm seeing. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just want to make a comment. So, Dan, you're an amazing educator.
Thank you.
The music program in Narragansett became the identity of at least one of my children for so long. And you are, you are a superhero in our house, and your name is often referred to. I just want to name that and call it out. And I appreciate the level of advocacy you have for your program and the creativity you have in continuing to find new ways to inspire more students to engage in, in the arts. And I think it's wonderful. I think you're amazing, and I'm really happy for you.
Thank you so much, Josh.
And Josh, thank you so much for your friendship and, and your ability to work on so many projects
together with the school committee over the years. We'll definitely miss you here.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Let Robert know. Okay, so we're going to go back to the top with school committee business item number one. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of training on Power School, Power Schedular, in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred? So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So this is a piece of our ongoing skill building, both for our building administrators, like guidance counselors, having to do with scheduling. So you have heard me speak to several times around this, the scheduling process, the importance of the scheduling process at the middle school and the high school, how it drives lots of what we do. We are going to be changing our scheduling, and we're taking the opportunity to do some skill building for our administrators and for our guidance counselors around how to build a master schedule most effectively. It will also allow us to refine our timeline. And so that ideally, what we would like to see is that students are making course selections in December and January, are finalizing those towards the end of January into February. We then will have a good picture of what our staffing, complete staffing needs and course selections will be in February into March, which means that we can get everyone scheduled March into April, have a final schedule by May, is really what our, our timeline would be. If you kind of imagine this, this aligns with our budget process as well, right? And so we can make more informed choices when we have a clearer picture of the budget, as, clearer picture of the schedule to help inform our budget choices going forward. But with that, Giulio has been doing the legwork to set up our training.
Yeah. So as Dr. Cummings explained, scheduling is a long process. It's not a put-in course request, hits a button, and it's there. It takes months and months. And this is the perfect opportunity, like Dr. Cummings explained, with a new schedule probably coming in, and we have a new assistant principal at the high school, a new dean at the high school, a new, a new principal at the middle school. And this is the perfect opportunity to really get them trained on how to efficiently do this and stick to that timeline, so that we can provide a good schedule for the students, but also a good budgeting timeline for what staffing we will need. So this training would be three days of virtual training. That's called the Prepare to Build. So that's where they would, the administrators and guidance would get in there, build the courses, build the prerequisites, build all of the stuff that they would need prior to the students being able to do their course selection. Students would go in, do the course selection. But then, the majority of the work is actually building of the schedule. It's constant tweaking, it's running loads, it's running simulations, it's running scenarios. And they take eight hours, ten hours each night to run, and you see the results, you make adjustments, courses, are you adding a course, making, so all of that is really, it's hands-on. Power School will come out and train our administrators and guidance for four days on that, in the hopes of, by the time they leave, we have a full middle school and high school schedule. And that would hopefully, we would do the online Prepare to Build, end of November, beginning of December, with the hope of doing a February, March, come in and do a full scenario build and have a full schedule by the end of March.
And so ultimately, right, we want everyone to have a backup. And so we're training a relatively large group, so that, A, people can collaborate in the building of the high school and the middle school schedule, but B, we're not victim to having one person holding all of the knowledge. And if that person happens to retire or leave the district, leaving us high and dry. So we need to do this training so that we're distributing that knowledge amongst several people, so that, again, we have capacity should there be changes in staffing or changes in life choices.
And it is such a long, and, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it. The more hands that are involved and understand it, it makes it easier as well.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question. Is this a one-time fee, or if we wanted to, like, look at this training again in the future, would we, is this another sixteen thousand?
This is, and they do refresher types. This is like the full package as far as soup to nuts, like, the beginning to the end, providing a full, we could do a refresher on it. We'll also get recordings of the training so that we can refer back to those.
Excellent.
But this is a, this is a one-time, as far as the virtual, you know, question and answer, and the onsite, it's one time.
And how many, approximately, do we think are going to participate in this training?
I think right now we have twelve. It's the assistant principal, the two deans, the principal, technology integration coach, director of student services, guidance department. So it's a lot. I believe it's twelve that we have on there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I noticed that the start date was this past September, going through next September, but the training won't be spread out over that whole year.
No, no, that's.
You said it's going to be more concentrated.
Yes, that was just the purpose of the quote. The three days will probably be the end of November, beginning of December, for the three online days in consecutive. And then the onsite would be in March.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on to item number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration toward the contract for the audiovisual theatrical lighting package for the NHS auditorium renovation project to ATR Treehouse in the amount of one hundred, one hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents? So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So if you recall, when we first approved the contract for the auditorium renovation, we were intentional in not including the audiovisual into that original contract, because we wanted to, at the recommendation of our owner project manual manager, as well as the architect, to say that, that's a much more specialized and localized piece. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Steve, who can talk a little bit about who this is and what they're doing.
So ATR Treehouse is one of the premier vendors in the state for theatrical sound and lighting. They're on the state MPA number four sixteen. That's how we came to the price. We negotiated back and forth, involved Sarah Kane and Dan, Dan in the equipment selection because it's a specialty that is beyond me. I'm just here representing the building committee to ask for your approval on this.
And so there were several design pieces that Sarah and Dan helped us with for sure, and the architect recommended, you know, things like, what does your light tower look like? And, you know, in terms of what the, how are your components put in so that they are able to be used by students, but still of a professional level? You know, we can, we could go into gritty detail if, if you would like that. I would have to have Sarah or Dan come and explain it to us. But, you know, certainly, they both have given their stamp of approval in terms of this meets what their needs are, both for theater and for musical productions.
Steve, what do you anticipate the timeline of the work being done?
Twenty to thirty weeks.
Are there any supply chain problems?
That's why we bid it, that's why we bid it the way we did, is because we could change on the fly if we need to for equipment.
Because I know it was like ten to twelve pages of equipment.
Where the vendor works directly for us, yeah.
We haven't used ATR Treehouse before, have we?
We haven't, not, not since I've been here.
Oh, I know. They sounded familiar to me. I know what it is now. C.C.R.I. had them redo their auditorium.
Yeah, they're, they're the, the vendor that primarily the state uses.
Any other questions or comments for Steve?
Just saying thank you for including such a variety of inputs from different staff members and project leaders, especially the music department. And I trust them and all of your recommendations. There's a lot outlined in here. And if anyone has any questions, I highly recommend they look at the quote, because it's broken down very well. Thank you.
Very detailed. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to item number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to award additional fees for acoustical and audiovisual engineering to Secucchio and Associates Architects in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars? So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
This, this is a change order to include acoustical and the theatrical lighting and sound design to a higher level than just having an electrical contractor design it?
So one of the things that happens is that when we go in to RIDE for approval for housing aid and to get approved for these things, is often they will have suggestions on how these things work. And so RIDE is very invested in theaters, being very theatrical. And, you know, one of the things that they kind of pushed back on was our design. They didn't demand or say that we had to do this exactly, but they did certainly have a lot of questions around sound design and around light design. So our architect called in subcontractors to help them with that design, and that would be this change order, and that had happened over the summer.
Any other questions or comments for Steve?
Just a quick question. And this is not the same company that we just approved previously, right? This is through Kavanaugh?
This is the Kavanaugh, and he, he's the designer of the system, and he's approved all the equipment that ATR Treehouse, who we just awarded to, so.
Okay. Thank you for elaborating on that.
Yeah, we did it a little bit backwards, right? So you approved the equipment, now you're approving the design.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I noticed on the, the arts initiative that the musical instruments was granted. They also say that they, they fund auditorium upgrades. So is there any chance we can apply to that?
So we chose to use it for the musical instruments. We could have applied it to the auditorium, but since we, the musical instruments are an ongoing budget need, and we're not necessarily budgeted for, and the auditorium is budgeted for, we recommended that we use it for the instruments rather than something that we've already budgeted for.
And the grant was only like thirty-eight thousand dollars, too. So this.
Correct.
Capital auditorium project's been in our capital plan for ten years. Like the instruments, it's like, all right, thirty-eight thousand dollars goes a long way when you are hand-selecting instruments, and we'll get a good shelf life out of those, too.
And as Dan said, it was kind of a, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get some instruments that we might not otherwise be able to access.
Any other questions or comments for Steve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Is the committee okay if we just do the last auditorium, the change order one? You guys good if we do number six, then we'll finish the night with the policy?
I was going to make that a question.
Okay, great. So we're going to go out of order again to number six. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve a contingency fund for the Narragansett High School auditorium renovation project in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars? So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So this is getting into some process weeds, but let me kind of give, frame it out for you. So the way that our purchasing policy works, and Karen, jump in at any time, right, is that essentially, in construction, any purchase over ten thousand dollars, including change orders, requires school committee approval. When we are in the midst of a ongoing construction process, often, we have a weekly building committee meeting, and often there will be a change order that is still within the budget, but by the letter of our policy, would still need school committee approval. What this is asking for is to say, it's authorizing the building committee and through, with the building committee, me, but in consultation with the building committee, to authorize change orders within the budget up to a total amount of two hundred thousand dollars. And then if we have change orders that go beyond that, we would need to come back to the school committee. These are monies that are already budgeted to the project, but sometimes there are some adjustments in how the funds are allocated. Within an allowance, for example, like something, one thing costs less, but something else costs more, we shift those funds, and it authorizes us to make those adjustments within the total overall budget. overall budget. Did I get that right?
Any question, any questions for Peter or Karen about that?
Just a quick comment on that, just, you know, to emphasize that this would really be a big saver in time and energy, I would assume. I've seen that mentioned here, but like every time that something comes up and it comes up for school committee approval, we're looking at delay, delay, delay. But this is a great opportunity to really get the ball rolling on a lot of things and, you know, have my full faith in, in all your decisions. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and it is not, you know, kind of me sitting alone in an office like signing checks, right? So it is, you know, part of a, a committee process. We have a full building committee there. We work closely with our owner's project manual, who is tracking every penny. You know, Steve is a part of that and Karen has oversight of that as well. So it's just expediting the process and unfortunately, we are in a atmosphere right now where delay is dollars, quite honestly, because things are going up every day. And so it helps us get things done more, more quickly.
And save money, I assume.
I hope so.
Yeah.
One more clarifying question? So this, this would be only for the auditorium project? We're not changing any regulation or anything like that?
Correct.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So we have one more business item for tonight. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve the first read of the student representative to the school committee policy? So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So, so I can give a brief overview if that would be helpful. So one of the things that you have as a school committee goal is to encourage student participation and voice and we have been talking, you know, about different ways to do that. And so with the pandemic restrictions finally kind of coming to a close, you know, it seemed a reasonable time to move forward with having some student voice at the school committee table. So there's, there are, you know, several other districts in Rhode Island that have this practice and it is more common in other states. So if you look closely at the policy, this is for a student that is, it's by application rather than vote. And so a student applies to the, the school improvement council of the high school and then it's reviewed by the school improvement council with some interviews. And one of the pieces of this policy, and I want to thank Diane for kind of suggesting this as we were going through the policy committee, is to have a school committee liaison be a part of those interviews. And so that person can then be a connection to the student as well, once a student is, is selected. So that school committee liaison would be something that's kind of a constant for that student as they go forward. The student, again, the, the pieces are in the policy, should be a student that has taken civics, is going to be a senior and their term would go from September to June. So it would be for one school year. And again, a student would apply during their junior year to be appointed into their senior year.
Can I just make a comment on this or, okay. I just want to say that this policy is something near and dear to my heart. It's something I've advocated for since deciding to run for the school committee on day one. Student representation at school committee meetings is not only important, I have felt that it is necessary. This is a wonderful step being taken by the school committee by providing a platform, a seat at the table for a student liaison to have a voice and to participate in dialogue. And I think it really shows we are promoting civic engagement and active community participation from students. Thank you to everyone involved with crafting this historic policy, I would add, and thank you Diane for your leadership on the policy committee as well. And while we often invite all members of the community to come and speak at school committee meetings, I think the inclusion of a student representative really speaks volumes to the high caliber of the school committee and our leadership. So again, thank you for bringing this to, on the agenda and I'm really impressed and eager to see how this comes to fruition over the next year. So, and I do have a question on top, on top of all that commentary. Based on what I'm reading here in the selection process, the student, junior class students will, in theory, be applying and that student would then, in their senior year, assuming probably September, should this be approved, in September coming up, they would start coming to school committee meetings. Would they be sitting at the table here? Would they be sitting down there? Just wondering how that would look.
You know, that's certainly at the discretion of the school committee and, you know, you all can, can decide that. I would tell you that in my experience, most often the student does sit up with the committee, but that's certainly your choice.
And I think it's also important just to echo that this student would be an active participant, but a non-voting member at the table.
Correct. And so because there's often sensitive items that happen in executive session, the student would be, I think of it almost as an advisory member, right? And so would not be a part of executive session, would be a non-voting piece, but could certainly suggest items for someone to suggest to be a part of the agenda and those types of things.
And lastly, would the school committee liaison be a new, something that we would approve as a school committee to add as like a new subcommittee sort of thing or how would we go about establishing that position?
I, yes, you could do it that way, you know, for sure. I think it could also just be on a volunteer basis. And so again, that's something that you all could decide amongst you, right? And, you know, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have that be an officially appointed piece.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a first read of the policy. Any other questions or comments about the first read? And thank you for your work on this with Pete, Diane. I think the, the latest revisions are great and this is exciting. All right, so all those in favor? Oh.
It's a first read. It's a policy.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the first read of this policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right. Are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? Okay, so our next meeting is December 21st at seven o'clock. And what I will say is we obviously did not, we, we had to table the item about selecting officers and committee assignments. So what I would say to the four returning incumbents and for Jennifer is to take a look at the different subcommittees because at the next meeting in December, we're going to want to have some kind of open discussion and assign members to different committees. And my only question, Lauren, was there's a couple ones that are standing meetings and I wonder if in our packet for a couple of those, if it meets on a standing day or time, could you put that in there? Like I, when I look at like the special education advisory committee, I feel like it's probably a set night or a set time. Same thing with the wellness committee. I don't know where we're at right now with the diversity committee. I don't know how often the district technology committee meets, but if there's anything that meets at a standing time, if you could put that level of detail in the packet. I know a lot of them, it won't, you know, like the Knights of the Rockingham Arch meets like once or twice when the town council's ready to do that. And the building committee and the capital reserve, you know, is a finite timeline during budget season, but it's not a, a set thing. But I just didn't know. Those are the only ones I could think of was wellness and special education advisory. If there's anything that's a set day and time, just list that level of detail in our packet for next month.
Yeah, and we, we did for, for this term, we put at least how frequently the committees are meeting. If, if we don't know exact days and times, just how frequently, so to give the people an idea of what it is they're signing up for.
Right, like does it meet once a month, twice a month, or once a year for the Rockingham Arch there, whatever? The capital reserve committee, once or twice a year? That's it, so. Okay. All right. So again, another thank you for Josh. I'm glad that you came tonight. We wish you well. We will miss you. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn at eight oh two?